...our city leaders, though wisdom, patience, and understanding to make the best decisions for our city and its people. Amen?
Amen.
Mr. Hunker?
Here.
Mr. Ashman?
Here.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Yezo?
Here.
Reverend Agnew?
Here.
Mr. Schramm?
Here.
You should have all received copies of the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any additions, corrections? If not, then they will stand approved as received. Is there any correspondence in the... Then we will move on to reports of the officers and start with the mayor.
I just got a few things I want to cover here. First of all, Chief Murphy's last day is going to be the third, which is Friday. He's going to retire. We have Sergeant West, he's going to fill in as interim chief until we get through the process of the chief. Hopefully it's relatively quick. I'll give what Paul, if you're going to be available after this, and share a little information I have so we can move forward. I'm not sure it's CIVI or it is CIVI.
Yeah, I just have to leave by five, four, so.
Okay. If not, we'll just walk out there. I just got to see what the civil service has to do and everything so I can expedite this thing along. Cleanup week. We're going to go ahead and have a cleanup week, but it's going to be different than last year. We're not going to do curbside. That fund just come out of the red into the black, and if we do curbside, we're going to go right back into black. So we're going to do it same as we do in the spring. We'll set a couple boxes down there, have packers down there for wires, the 11th, Saturday the 11th, from eight to 12 on First Street. I know it's going to be inconvenient for some of our citizens, but the alternative, we had two alternatives. We raise rates, or we leave rates the same. We have it down there, we don't have cleanup at all. So at least this way, they're getting something, and hopefully next year we can get back on track and go back to our original schedule. Had a meeting yesterday. Got from YMCA, Adam Shimskey. They're going to put on some programs in a rec center through October, November, kind of a trial run, and if they're able to pull in a customer base there, they're looking to expand it into next year. Just clarify before it gets out there, and the rumor they'll get started, no, they're not taking over the rec center, no, they're not moving to Martins Ferry, because that's the first two questions that are going to fly all over social media. So the answer is no and no. But they are going to put on some programs down there, they're going to have senior yoga. They have a lot of programs that they're talking about putting on, starting small, and, you know, we're going to build from there, and hopefully it's a great partnership, and but we'll, we'll see. We're going to start small and make sure it works for both sides, and if it does, we can continue it on, it can expand and move forward from there. So other than that, I really have nothing else. We're just on a regular routine maintenance right now, getting ready for winter, obviously. So I have none, President.
Any questions for the mayor? Mr. Rogers?
Are we still doing pothole patching?
Yes, we are.
We were out today trying to catch up. Okay, because that, there's a couple people still up on Main Street that, how many every time I see them?
What block is it?
Uh, from Mackey down to the community center, you know, by that. And also going over to the Polish Club right nearby Selby, there's a bunch of potholes going over to the Polish Club, too. I mean, some of them are really pretty deep, I mean, deep, deep. It's at the back way? Yeah. Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
I just wanted to add the, that one section there on Mackey Avenue that goes across Eighth Street, or, you're not talking about Sixth Street, are you?
No.
Seventh Street.
I was talking Eighth.
Okay. Because that one is, is the gas company.
No, this, no, this isn't the gas company. This would, this is via sewer grading.
Yeah, we got it checked out. We do have some work to be done up there from where they fixed that slip up there for peacetime ship. I believe that they've contracted with the local pay, and they'll get that on their schedule for this year, so them roads are supposed to be repaired.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Sutec, Service Director.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple things. We are continuing to catch up on patching potholes and still trying to catch up on water holes, because we have quite a few. So we'll be, as long as the weather stays good and they continue to make asphalt, we'll continue to patch as, as we go along. So hopefully the weather stays pretty decent. We've still got quite a, quite a few places to patch with water holes and potholes. One thing is our ozone equipment was delivered, it's stored in garage down at the water plant. If anybody wants to take a tour to look, see what this massive piece of equipment looks like for the ozone, operating generators and so on, just let me know, and I'll show you what they, they look like, and, and they're pretty, they look like type of space shuttle type things, so. And then, again, it was made out of the country, and it had to be shipped in, and it took a little bit longer than we anticipated, and we had to go through a lot of hoops just to get that over here, positive tariffs and so on and so forth. So if anybody wants to look at them, let me know, and we'll take a quick look at them and see what, what we got. Really, other than the patching and, and this, and about the sanitation collection for the 11th, pretty much the only one thing is council, we do have, Jack, I put that preliminary note issue information on your desk, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe one day next week, we'll sit down, look at it, is that good with you?
Yeah.
Okay. The note will be rolling over, we're going to put another half million into it, that'll be about six million, or just some more things we, we need to get done, and we might as do it now while we can. So roll it until next year, and we'll look to see if we want to take it to bonds, or what we actually want to do for next year. I'll sit down with Jack and see how, what all he wants to do with that for next year, so that'll all be moving forward. There's a lot more things we want to get done, to make sure everything's done and up to standard on that. Cow, um, let's see, Manswetter will be looking at, they got the purchase order and everything to do the roof, since they had some issues there, so that's hopefully going to be started here within the next week or so. Hopefully the weather stays well with that, so pretty much that whole plan will be done inside, outside. Around October 13th, the filter bed company will be coming in to start one of our filter beds, because they're going to do one, and then they're going to rotate and do the other. So that'll hopefully start with, here in the next couple weeks, all the equipments in. It's just going to take a little bit of time to make sure those filter beds are clean, and they'll make sure that nothing's wrong with the beds itself, and what all they, they do to make sure the filter beds are up. The bridges are in, the bridges will be set up, and we'll be able to do actual backflow cleaning and so on and so forth, without having to do it and going out and doing it manually with a switch. It'll be automatically done through our SCADA system. Our SCADA system's almost completely done. We're looking into cost for the wellfields with cameras and so on, so that's being looked at by Chris Baker. So hopefully we'll get an idea what that cost would be. I think it's, it's a needed thing to have cameras out there and lighting, so it's going to be a joint project on both of those. So we're moving in the right direction. If there's any extra funds left over, I particularly would like to have the wellfield fenced in. But again, the cost for fencing and so on and so forth is pretty expensive, so we'll take one step at a time and see where we are here as we move down the road. That's all from me, Madam President.
Any questions for Mr. Sutec? Mr. Ashman?
As far as the tour of the water plant goes, should we try to maybe get that scheduled as a group, or just like individually get with you?
Well, sometimes it's hard as a group.
Right.
Congressman Ashman, like I said, if I'm, let me know a day or two ahead of time, you know, it's not going to take a two-hour tour, show you a little bit of what's been transpiring and why, just give me a call, we'll set it up, even if it's after hours or whatever, whatever suits anybody's time, just let me know.
Sure. All right. Thanks, Mr. Sutec.
Mayor?
Yeah, I just have one other thing I forgot, I apologize. On this YMCA deal, this was a group effort by a lot of people. I just sat in on it the last day. I was on the phone, actually had to go to Dennis the, the first meeting, and I believe Paul was there, and Ms. Yezo was there, Dan Stevens was there, Andy was there, and they kind of knocked down all the preliminary on that, so I kind of want to give credit where credit was due, because all I did was sit in the last meeting, and we kind of put the numbers to the, to the game on what was going to be paid out for the city to benefit, compensation for the building. So I apologize, I wanted to make sure I give credit to the people that, that worked on this project, which was Ms. Yezo, Paul, Dan Stevens, Andy was there the first meeting, and the last meeting was Andy, myself, and Ms. Davis. So, and if there's anybody else who was involved, I apologize for missing you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions for Mr. Sutec? Thank you, Mr. Sutec.
Thank you, Madam President.
Auditor, Mr. Regis?
I just got a couple things. First of all, I just want to clear a couple things up. Last week, I, I wasn't running hot from anybody. I was, I, my granddaughter plays college soccer in Indiana, which is a four-hour trip. That night she was playing at Muskingdom College, which was less than an hour trip. I went to watch my granddaughter play college. I wasn't running, wasn't avoiding, wasn't doing nothing. I was here, I mean, I know I took a lot of shots, but I was here. As far as the $250,000, it's encumbered now, but with making the meetings one a month, everything goes a month behind, because I don't, we don't do nothing until we get approved meetings, minutes in there, so we have the proof of it. So that's what put that behind. Your, your hospital fund, Suzanne, is down to zero now, if you look at it.
Yeah, I saw it.
So, yeah, willing to work with council on anything, I, I just don't, I, I just, I, and John, the reason I get that thing, because you told me one day in there, you said, Jack, you talked to me or send me stuff when funds are, when you have a problem with funds. You told me you didn't want no surprises, like coming in, rushing in, telling you I'm laying the whole street department off without any warning, so that's the only reason I sent that to you. Because when I left the meeting that day, I said, does anybody, I read them figures off, they, I said, you want me to write them down, send them out to everybody? That's the only reason I did it. It wasn't nothing, I don't, you know, I, it is up to you whether you want to raise rates or nothing, I ain't trying to get you to do nothing. I don't want nothing done. I'm just trying to keep you up. If you don't, if it bothers you that I do that, I won't do it.
No, my, my thing is, you give an estimated cost for the rest of the year in sanitation, which is great, it tells us what our expenses are, but there should have been an estimated revenue included into that, which, I mean, if you give me a piece of paper, I deal with it every day, obviously, and Andy, but some of our council people don't, so you get a piece of paper that says, we need $256,000 in sanitation to get through the end of the year, I'm looking at that piece of paper going, we're going to be $256,000 short, so just in my opinion, there should have been an estimated revenue in it, which I think...
Well, I mean, I put that out there, if somebody wanted to come and talk, we talked about it, and we got the revenue. I just, I just, that's shame on me for not doing it, that's the only figures I call off at that meeting, and that's why I did it, so.
Yeah, let's do better communications, Jack.
Yeah, that'd work a little bit better, but I, you know, I try to get a hold of you, and I keep saying, I'll be up to talk to you, or I'll even come down and talk to you, that never happens. So I, you know, that's, I'm just trying to do my job.
Moving forward, I think it'd be a good idea.
But don't, I just want to make sure, don't anybody think that I was running and hiding from anybody. I'm very easy to find. I just missed that meeting because of family obligation. Two things come to me in this job. First thing is to God, and then my family, and I'm going to put them ahead of here. So if that's, if that's bad, and, and I shouldn't do that, then...
I don't think anybody thinks that's bad.
Then I don't need this job.
I think you got your priorities correct.
I think, I think we all put family first.
That's the way it is, so. That's the only reason anybody's behind, Bob, that I wasn't ignoring council's motions. Everything was just a month behind, because there's only one meeting a month, so you had to wait till next month to get the minutes approved.
That's why I came in to talk to you, so we could...
So that's all done?
No problem.
So I hope I clarified everything.
Thank you, Mr. Regis.
Are we back to two meetings a month now?
Yes, we are, back to the regular schedule as of September.
That'll be, that'll be great to have that.
Anything else?
I think we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Regis. Any questions for Mr. Regis?
Go over these things, just to have, make sure we're on the same page. All right.
Any questions, Mr. Regis? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's all, I didn't see anything. Law Director, Mr. Stecker?
No report. I did send an email to Andy regarding the Kaufman situation, and how we're going to approach that moving forward, and we're still going back and forth on the contract for, what shall we call it, the water company.
Tri-County?
Tri-County. I think they just need to approve it.
Okay. But that would just be a yearly contract until next year, so...
Just temporary. Yeah. Well, yeah.
I think we'll have another meeting before we move into next year or so, because I think then we talked, I'd maybe be meeting every couple months or so, so we're all on the same page, so nothing drops through the...
Sure.
We need to approve an actual contract, or we just need to, because we actually...
We set the rates, I mean, I think they're paying them the rate now.
Yes, they did accept the rate, and we're staying at the minimum. I think we just need to, like, when we did meet, Paul, we were going to meet every couple months or so, just to make sure where we are, what we're going to be doing going forward, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Yeah, they just need to agree, if for some reason we didn't come to a long-term agreement, that when we set the rate for next year, if our expenses go down, their rate's not going down.
That's correct.
Because they have to make up the discount they've auditioned.
Is that all, Mr. Stecker?
Yes.
Thank you. Police Department, report. Fire Department?
Yes, I turned in the quarterly report yesterday. Third quarter, we had 74 total calls responded to by the fire department, with nine working structure fires, or working fires, and 15 motor vehicle crashes. We're up to a total of 214 calls answered to date with fire response. Talking with Mary down the EMS, they're at 1,096 on the year, with approximately 344 in the third quarter, with a total call response at 1,310, combined with fire and EMS to date. Found out today, didn't officially get the letter, we did not get awarded the AFG grants that we submitted for, that cycle ended yesterday. We have not received a denial letter, but we did not get an acceptance either, so we, we missed out on those grants again this year. So I'll be working with the, the folks in the department to see what our next steps are, get ready for the next AFG cycle, and submit for another grant, and, and see what we can do there. Lastly, Representative Ferguson was here last, last meeting, I believe it was, and he was talking about that tax, tax of Ohio and everything. Followed up with that with another meeting out of St. Clairsville, with all of Belmont County's fire and EMS folks. The county auditor was there as well, with Mr. Ferguson. I don't think there's anybody in this room that wouldn't like to see taxes go away or be decreased, but I am deeply concerned. Worst case scenario, this passes next spring, goes effective January 1st in 2027, we will receive our last tax payment to fund the fire department, police, EMS, any active levy that is on the books. Our last payment will be August of '27.
That's correct.
We have some serious things to look at and discuss if this happens. Everything will be unfunded, schools, police, EMS, 911, senior services.
That's across the state, will happen.
Yes, it's, it's across the entire state. I just want to express my concern, because it's going to be bad. It's a big animal, and with, with absolutely no plan in place, and, and they keep saying, well, we'll have two and a half years to figure it out. Do you think Columbus is going to figure it out in two and a half years? I, I don't think so, and, and it's deeply concerning.
Not if you look at school funding.
Right. So...
They, they have to change the whole revenue mechanism to replenish all those schools, all the cities, towns, and villages, and there's bigger schools in our school that they get a lot of state funding. It's, it's a scary thing.
It's very scary. I asked Mr. Ferguson, I said, okay, so is, is somebody in Columbus going to look at our tax levies here in Martins Ferry? Take an average of the, of the five years, the last five years, and, and give us that average annually? Or are we going to get what we're supposed to be collecting off the taxes, because we know we don't get all of our tax dollars? Who's going to, who's going to come up with the number that now the fire department's going to operate off of? That's a huge concern. Somebody in Columbus doesn't know what it takes to operate Martins Ferry Fire Department, Police Department, EMS, 911, nothing. So it's, it's concerning, and I just want to voice my concern here.
Thank you. I think we're all concerned. You know, we know what the effect it'll have on our general fund and all of our safety services. It's, it sounds good.
Sounds great.
It sounds like, who wouldn't want to not pay property taxes? But part of your benefit of living in a city, when you pay these taxes, is your safety forces, and without them, if, if we were to have, I don't even know what we would do. I, I, I wouldn't even hazard a guess right now. I know there are options, I can think of a few, but I wouldn't even, it'd be so complicated and unreliable initially.
The auditor during that meeting out there, she just looked at Belmont County alone, she said that to make up the money increase for sales tax, Belmont County alone will have to go to 22% to make up for the loss of revenue and annual tax.
22%?
Sales tax.
Sales tax, yeah. Yeah.
But, yes, I mean, that's, we can go right across the river and spend our money elsewhere. What do you think it would be in Columbus?
Mr. Schramm?
Yeah, but then Mr. Ferguson stayed when he was talking during last meeting, stayed that the money is there now, that had to be an awful, regardless of the money statewide.
Right. He says the money's available, they put the waste, wasteful spending, and he's only one vote, and everybody else in, in the state, all representatives would have to vote to approve something.
Right.
And there's no plan.
And he said the $400 million went to Cleveland Brown Stadium, passed by one vote. So one more no vote, it would never happen, that $400 million would never went there, so.
Sure going to have to replace the funds somewhere.
Correct.
Somewhere down the road, it's going to run out.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Any other officers who would like to report? If not, we'll move on to committees. Finance and Audit, Mr. Hunker?
No report.
Street, Mr. Rogers?
No report.
Ordinance, Reverend Agnew?
No report.
Sewer Sidewalk, Mr. Ashman?
No report.
Safety, Mr. Schramm?
On safety with the fire department, Chief Smith had all the departments, everyone in all four departments noted, that they said to make the change for Chief One or Chief Two to be outside the city limits of Martins Ferry, up to seven miles, so it was unanimous on the fire department's part. And I think if we want, we're down to like 39 members, and if we want to get people involved, I think we have to go outside, just like the police department did, to get people interested in where the department, the fire department.
And I think you all have copies of those minutes that you passed out, if you want to refer to them. Mr. Rogers?
So that's seven miles, Mr. Schramm? Seven hundred pounds?
Seven miles.
Seven miles.
Seven.
Okay.
We can discuss that under miscellaneous.
Under miscellaneous, make a vote.
Service, Mr. Schramm?
No report.
Real Estate Building and Grounds, Mr. Hunker?
No report.
Cemetery, Ms. Yezo?
No report.
Public Relations, Mr. Ashman?
No report.
Utility, Mr. Hunker?
Yeah, we had a meeting on September 25th, and Andy was there, he gave us a good report, and we discussed delinquent utility bills, and they had just sent out 50 notices, and got 40 paid, and ten were in the process of being shut off. I mean, this just didn't hap, you know, this happens periodically. And then we talked about the sanitation, and we got Jack's report today, they're starting to come out, so that looked good, and I'd say that's everything. Yeah, well, we, of course, we discussed the high rises and the increased revenue from the sanitation charge era when Andy got that straightened out. So right now, our utility committee and everything, I, they're looking good.
Thank you, Mr. Hunker. Code, Reverend Agnew?
No report.
Income Tax, Mrs. Armstrong. Are there any other committees or liaisons who would like to report? If not, I, that'll take us to hearing of any resident relative to any matter which may properly be brought to the attention of council. If the resident would like to speak, please approach the microphone, give your name and address, because we wouldn't recognize you.
Yeah, I know, you would never recognize me, but because it says it's protocol, I am Rita K. Randall, I live at 246 North 7th Street, Martins Ferry. Anything else you want from me? I forget what all you asked for.
That's all.
Okay. And I am the former auditor for 28 years, and I loved it, I really did, even if it meant fighting with John. But I am here because I can ask for financial reports, and I do ask for them frequently, and I felt real good one day, and came in and got a financial report, and saw that $93,000 was given to the sanitation department out of, out of the general fund, and this is not allowed. The enterprise funds are supposed to stand alone, that's why they're enterprise funds, that's your water, your sanitation, your parking meter, your sewer, and anything else that falls under enterprise, they're to raise their own money and pay for themselves. And it just so happened that I ran into a former auditor of Martins Ferry while she wasn't, she was with the state, and I wanted to make sure before I brought this to council, and she says, no, you're not allowed to give money to the enterprise fund. So that's why I'm here, and I'm looking at $93,000 and thinking, how much of that could be done for other things? And the biggest complaint I hear, and of course I have too, is condemned houses, the raccoons that are in them, they do damage to my foundation, they do damage to my fence, and I, of course, can't trap them, and I can't afford to pay somebody to trap them for me. But I'm sure other people have the complaints, that money could have been, could have gone And really, that's probably about all I've got. I was in too, because I had a problem. I was hacked bad, and I had to change my checking account and ran into all kinds of problems, because the utility office pays for my bills. I mean, they, they take it right out of my checking account, and everything I proposed to them, because they couldn't get it done fast enough for the, but luckily I talked them into it. Andy had to give them permission to do it, and I don't know why there isn't somebody in the office that could give them permission, but I got it cleared up, so that is all I have, that's why you're seeing me here.
Thank you, Ms. Randall.
Meeting, Phil Wallace, 801 Spring Haven Drive. I want to add on to what the, what the chief was talking about a short time ago. This is going to be a hotly debated issue this, this year on the property taxes.
Can you pass that down?
Sure. I've done a little bit of research, and I'd just like to pass it on to the council here. I'm not going to read it off the top of my head, I'm going to read it off paper. Number one, it's a constitutional change in the, in our state of Ohio, which I don't think we need to change our constitution. What I'm passing around is the copy of the initiative that they want to change, and it says, "Major arguments against removing Ohio's property tax center on the catastrophic financial impact on local services, including public schools, emergency services, and libraries. Critics know that no viable alternative, none, no source has been proposed to replace the approximately $24 billion in property tax revenues that is lost statewide." Property tax is the most stable... Property tax is the most stable and important source of revenue in the Ohio local governments for schools and the social, essential services. Removing it would be a massive budget deficit. Townships, which serve 35% of Ohio's population, rely on mostly property taxes to fund their fire and EMS services, police protection, and road improvements. Eliminating the tax would gut these local services. Approximately 60% of Ohio's property tax revenue goes directly to public schools. The elimination of this funding accounting for the, an estimated $13 billion would destabilize school budgets, forcing dramatic cuts to programs and staffing. Other services funded by the property tax would be impacted, it includes libraries, boards of development disabilities, and local parks and recreations. The ballot initiative to eliminate property taxes does not specify how the revenue would be replaced. Critics contend that a solution is not guaranteed, and any replacement would likely, likely be a loss to Ohioans. To make up for lost revenue, the state would likely have to increase local taxes, increase sales tax, and higher, higher, higher sales tax would disproportionately affect low-income residents, making regressive policy changes. On, on the sales tax, you know, we are, we are surrounded by five states, Michigan, Indiana, Kentucky, West Virginia, and Pennsylvania. We, we rely on a lot of those people coming to our state to purchase things they need. Also, if this tax were to go into effect, like the chief said, it would be up to about 22%, and that's, that's a fact. Our people will start going to the other states, and we're gonna lose a lot of, lot of revenue, not only in sales, but small businesses like myself may be forced out of business. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go out of business because of somebody wanting to get rid of the property tax. Economists and policy analysts suggest that eliminate property tax would not lower rent. Instead, it would allow landlords and developers to increase profits, and renters would end up paying through other, other way, other taxes. Opponents argue that property tax are a more stable source of funding than sales income tax, which is, which can fluctuate with the economy. Replacing the property tax would increase volatility and create long-term financial instability in local governments. The elimination of property tax would be a windfall for large property and development, development firms, making it cheaper than to hold on the, on the property and sell it at a higher price later on. With only government funds provided by, by the state to offset the loss of property taxes, our townships may be hard-pressed to continue to operate financially. So I'm asking this council, I'm asking the citizens of this town, the citizens of this state, when this initiative comes up next year, not this year, but next year, to vote against passing that initiative. And if you'll look at the, if you'll look at the initiative I gave you, let's look at one paragraph right there. The proposed amendment would add section fourteen to article twelve of the Constitution of the State of Ohio. The proposed amendment would abolish taxes for real property and prohibit, prohibit future taxes on real property. As used in this section, real property includes land itself, all growing properties, crop, growing crops therein, and all buildings, structures, and improvement, improvement properties attached to the land. This amendment shall take effect the first day of the year after it is passed. I'm, I'm urging everyone to vote against this when it comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. I think over the course of the next year, Martin's Ferry should take a stand as a government, and I think it's gonna take work on our part to try to get some message out, too. I won't be here, but I would encourage you, whether, whether there's some open city meetings or, or whatever, you know, I'll leave that in your hands, but I wouldn't want to drop this ball either. Yes, Mr. Sutak?
Phil, I agree with you a hundred percent. When, when, when the state legislature created the levies, okay, before it was inside village, okay? The inside village went to general fund operation, and your township, cities, villages, schools, et cetera. That, that was back in nineteen twenty, okay? And at that time, I believe it was fifteen mills inside. When the Great Depression hit, and everybody was struggling, they dropped from fifteen down to ten, okay? And again, that was for your general operating, and most of that general operating was for our safety services, okay? Somewhere down the road, because there was no additional funds from that collection, you needed street, additional fire, EMS, et cetera, et cetera. And so this is what the state legislature said, okay, we're not gonna raise this race taxes, let the people decide what services they want. This is devoted levies, whatever you wanted to, to be voted for. And those taxes stay right here for our citizens and so on and so forth. Some of the fear I had is, like I said, our fire department, tell me if I'm incorrect, chief, the people that voted the levies here in Martin's Ferry, if they have a fire or whatever, whatever their insurance does not pay, we do not charge the resident, is that correct?
That is correct, okay. They're tax-paying citizens, subsidy, they...
So if that levy's not there, then this fire department's gonna have to make up some of that fund somehow. So that charge is gonna go through people, okay? EMS, Mary's not here. So the levy we have to help with our EMS, help subsidize with what our services are. I, I think we build Medicare, Medicaid, and homeowners policies for if you have to, you think of your home, you have to be transported to the hospital or wherever, okay? We take that cost. A lot of times, what they pay us is not exactly what our service charge is. We do not charge the residents additional. So if these go away, to subsidize that, with those funds back to provide those services, somebody's gonna have to pay for it. And, and in long run, it could be more. If you're talking about sales tax, exactly what the chief said, and Phil, that they're gonna have to replenish that money somehow, okay? So looking at personal income tax might be another source. So the people working, if that, and I'm gonna say, is that about three percent state income tax that, that, out of your, your salary? It's about three percent, two point eight, three percent. They're gonna have to increase that, because you're gonna have to put that money back into the pot. Our local government funds that we get from the state that goes through the county that comes back for our general fund, mostly for our police services and, and our safety services, that, that pot comes back based on the general revenue that goes in their general fund, and then they take so much out and put it in the pot and distribute it out to all the political subdivisions. Okay? Street, I mean, cities, townships, villages, et cetera, okay? Our libraries are gonna be, they're funded by local government funds plus levy, okay? So somehow, those things are all going to diminish. Somewhere, you're gonna have to replace those funds, okay? How they do that, I don't think they even know. I don't think the timeframe to really sit down and put a, a true plan together to replace the funds, okay? It's gonna hurt education, it's gonna hurt our police, it's gonna hurt our EMS, it's gonna hurt our fire. Nobody wants to pay taxes, let's be honest. But how do we provide these services? And that, that's, that's something that, that somewhere, that somebody needs to restructure, find out. And, and, and if they do increase sales tax, everybody around the local boundaries, parts of all state, they're gonna cross the border to buy something that's gonna be cheap, okay? The ones that are gonna be stuck are in the middle part of the state where they have to go either all the way over to Pennsylvania, all the way over to Indiana, Kentucky, West Virginia. So they're gonna drive two hours to go shopping to save X amount of dollars. When they do that, probably if they go once a month or whatever, they'll have to take a U-Haul trailer to buy all the extra stuff and whatever. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a crazy animal to try to figure out what's the best thing for, for everybody. I think we need to just sit back or sit down and really think about this. The levies were put in, voted by the people for the services they wanted, okay? Take those services away, that's like I said, no more police fire, additional services, because it's gonna have, the money's gonna have to come back from somewhere. So I'm not gonna say anymore, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Sutak. But the point is well-taken. They, the people who are gonna pass this don't want to pay the taxes, which I absolutely get. But on the other hand, they still expect those services, so, anyway. Mr. Hunker?
Okay, we're discussing all of this, and I totally agree with you. But what caused it? Valuations, that big increase that we received? That's what caused this. Maybe we ought to be looking at how they do property taxes and figure your property values, because there's no rhyme or reason to the way they raise taxes for the properties. If you get on the auditor's website and look at your area, then look at the houses around you. There's no, there's no equality. Some are way up here, some are way, way low, and some are reasonably close to each other. But there's no rhyme or reason to the way they did it. And that's what really upsets me more than anything, is to do that, because I, myself personally, went out and filed a complaint. But they couldn't explain to me why or how they did their figuring for the property taxes. There should be a set number, state, from the state, the state should say, this amount increase, something like that. But there's no, there's, there's nothing there. And, and to look at the properties in my neighborhood, I went like, I spent like three hours online looking. I think everybody ought to do that. Look at your neighborhood, see who's paying what, and say, is that fair? It isn't. The state needs to look at, maybe straightening that out, and maybe this would go away. But they, they need to do something, you know, you know, this, I don't agree with myself personally, but two is, the people will vote for it, I understand why.
Thank you, Mr. Hunker.
I have one more question to Phil.
Okay.
Phil, and I'm not sure how this exactly statute, or the statute works. Now, the inside village was originally passed by the state legislature, correct? The levy structure was passed by the state legislature to give us council authority to put levies on, boards, et cetera, et cetera. So if this passes, and this, I couldn't find it anywhere, does that mean that the inside levies comes off too? Or just all the voted levies, or both in general?
No, nothing will be, nothing will be...
Nothing will be based on, okay? Okay.
Are there any other citizens who would like to speak?
Thank you, the name is Richard Hore, nine fifteen Virginia Street. First of all, any update regarding the possible reopening of East Ohio Regional Hospital? Haven't heard anything for a long time, and very curious. Hopefully, things are progressing in a positive way, but haven't heard anything, bit concerned to say the least.
Mr. Ramsey, when bankruptcy was filed, kinda put a damper on the movement to reopen hospital. There's another entity that was interested, I talked to them at length several times. But they don't want to go through the due process, they want to expedite it, and I said, it's just not the way things work. So they have to go through all the due process of the whole nine yards. The thing that upset me with this group is, they don't want to take East Ohio Regional Hospital's name because they don't want to absorb the debt. So I'm not, I won't tell you what I personally think about it, because it's not profession. But I don't, I don't see anything good happening in the near future, other than a Romano taking more patients, which is filled somewhat of a gap, which is a blessing to the city of Martin's Ferry.
Yeah, that's positive. But hopefully eventually, East Ohio Regional Hospital will be able to reopen again, and it'll be, it'll stay open this time, hopefully. Well, I guess we'll have to wait and see. Looked good there for a while, oh well. Also, too, something I'd like to bring to your attention, if there could be some patchwork done, or considered, consideration for patchwork done, it would be on South Ten Street, the nine hundred block. There had been some work there on the street, and there hadn't been any patchwork, but there'd been, and there's, you know, there's gravel, and it's, it's, it's rough. And I just thought that I'd mention that, to see if you can check down there, it's right in back of where, you know, Ray Looney lives, that area.
Is that like the alley?
Yes, they call it the alley, but it's South Ten Street, nine hundred block is South Ten Street.
Yeah, we'll check on that, because there was a sewer line, that's why I was asking Andy, there's a gas line right above that.
Yes.
And we've worked on one sewer line in the alley, so we'll, we'll get it checked out tomorrow.
That's in the alley, okay.
Thank you. And it seems like there are a lot of positive things happening with the Martin's Ferry Recreation Center. Is that a pretty safe assumption at this point, things seem to be moving in the right direction in that regard?
Well, I mean, we're hopeful, we, there, like I said, Project Ward, and Ms. Yeso, and Paul, and Dan, and some of these other people involved in the city are working on this to try to move the city forward in different directions for business, for recreation, for the whole nine yards, so. But it's, it's really hard to bring businesses in when you don't have the storefronts to put them. So you have like Dr. Johnson owns the old Dollar Store, you know, it's just, every day he carries more, part of the building's falling off. He don't care, he don't live anywhere near here, he probably won't come anywhere near here. He don't care what happens in City Martin's Ferry, he got what he wanted, he took his money, he ran.
It's a shame, it's a shame. I know that at the town hall meeting that took place here in Martin's Ferry on September the ninth, that there was discussed the possibility of Martin's Ferry City Administration having a meeting with the commissioners. I was wondering if that had taken place, and if so, what have been the results of that meeting?
Yeah, we are not having further meetings with them as of right now. And hopefully here in the near future, we have a lot of different things go on every week right now.
Oh, sure.
So, you know, hopefully in a, in the future, we do to, we have a lot of discussions to do on local government funding and some other things.
Okay. And lastly, is it known what the future plans may possibly be of the Times Leader Building here in Martin's Ferry? I know that it's been empty for quite a while, and it seems like a nice building, big building, and it's just been empty for so long. I was just wondering if there are any plans that maybe anybody's ever heard of?
Once again, that's probably own building, so it's totally up to them. I know there have been some people toward that building, I just, actually just talked to one this week, last week, and it just didn't suit, it didn't fit their needs, what they want, so. Apparently, that, it is up for sale, and, you know, they're, they must be marketing themselves or something, because we haven't really heard much, other than, I did talk to Jennifer, and she was telling us a little bit about it.
Hopefully, things will go well, and somebody will be in it relatively soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hore. Are there any other citizens?
Larry Eaton, through North Pine Street. The top of Mackey. John just, I heard him say something about Peace Township's gonna do it in the city. They're gonna fix that road?
Yeah, that was done by their project, that, that is covered under their project, and they've already... Who did they call, National Government Stone?
I heard, I heard, I think Roger Weaver was saying Cas Baker.
Cas Baker is gonna do the patching and...
Any idea, before cold weather comes?
We, that's their schedule, so.
It's still our street, and it's still where...
Okay, but it's tore up by the township, and they're gonna pay to repair it. We're not gonna go out to township and fix one of their problems. They created a problem here, if we create a problem out there, which we have on East Road, and we went out and we passed it, we didn't expect them to do it.
Okay, I'm just talking about safety-wise.
Right.
Because there's gonna be people, once it starts to freeze, we're gonna have a big problem there.
I'm hoping you have it done, Larry. I'm going to see if I can get ahold of, I was talking to Councilman Schramm. We're going to check on a couple things. I'm going to talk to Davey and see where we are with that. They're probably doing a lot of the projects. I did talk to Roger Weaver at a mitigation meeting out at Belmont College. He said they are aware of it. I will touch base again with Roger. I will report back, I'll give Jack a call, and let him, or I'll talk to Jack and let him let you know what he says to me. So I'll talk to Roger, I'm going to talk to, we're trying to get ahold of Cas Baker, right, Mr. Schramm?
Yeah, I'm calling him.
Okay. And see, make sure it's on the list. If not, my suggestion is, we're probably going to have to have our law director, and, you know, we have to go and pay it, do we go and get reimbursed or whatever? That's one of our steps. I didn't want to go that route, hoping that they are going to be doing that. Like, I agree 100%, it's pretty bad up there.
Yeah.
So, I'm not, but like I said, we're waiting for this, and hopefully, it does pan out. If it doesn't, I think our next step is to see if we can just have it done, and then send the bill over to Peace Township. That's one of our other options.
Yes.
Well, Larry, myself and Andy talked to, Dennis and Brid was in charge of that project and the other, and both owners, we talked to both of the owners, and they assured us that it would be taken care of.
That's what he told me when they was doing the project. He said, the last two days, the last two days, you never seen them again. They got their equipment, the first three days, and left.
You see Cuckoo Lane, where they go past my garage, like 60 concrete trucks went up a one-lane road that's not designed for just car travel, and it's all tore up, so, yeah, I feel your.
Yeah, but there's not much traffic on yet than there is on Mackey. I watch it every day, cars bouncing, especially people that don't know. And for up there visiting, us, we know. I, most of the time, I go up border lane and cut down in, because I ain't running over it.
All right. I guess, once you two get an answer and a kind of an estimate on timeframe, then they'll be back in touch with you.
I'll try to get a timeframe and like.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schramm. Are there any other citizens who would like to speak? If not, we do not have any legislation that I'm aware of, so we'll just go straight to miscellaneous business. And I'll go first. We, you all received a letter, a copy of a letter. This is a letter of support for the school district. And it's just for their application for a loan, I mean, for a grant, I'm sorry. And I hope everybody got a chance to go over that. This is the abandoned mine land economic revitalization program. They're applying for money to pay the campus of the school and where the roads intersect and where the roads are out there. There are places that are bad, and all they're asking for is our support. This is a 100% grant. We have nothing to do with this beyond the support that we think it's necessary. And if you all read it, there's obviously some irony to this letter, but we do need, I would need a motion of support that they can go ahead and just apply for this grant.
Which roads is that on, that road?
No, this isn't a road. This is, well, it's the whole, their campus, out around, their facility campus.
Inside the gates of the school.
So is anyone interested in making, I need to have an answer and a letter to them by tomorrow, actually, well, actually by Friday. And it's just a motion to support this letter. Mayor.
I've seen nobody raise their hand to support. This is an important project. This is safety of the kids. This isn't, of course, we fought back and forth to the school for the last three years. This costs the city absolutely nothing. This is from their fence end, it's for the safety of the children. So, and all they're asking is for a letter of support that, yeah, we support our children being safe, is basically what it comes down to.
Mr. Schramm. A motion by Mr. Schramm that we do support the school's application for the grant. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Rogers. Is there any discussion on this? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Schramm?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Ashman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yeso?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schramm?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Ashman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Ashman?
Just real quick, I wanted to bring this up under miscellaneous. I'm sure all of you have heard by now the tragic passing of one of our students, Landon. I can't, anybody knows?
Saul Chuck.
Saul, yeah, Saul Chuck. He was a student at Martins Ferry, and then I think previously went to St. John's. I did not know him personally, but that just has to be a, you know, a very devastating thing for his family. So, you know, on behalf of council and everybody here in Martins Ferry, just for the record, know that they're with us, they're in our thoughts and prayers at this time, and.
To express our condolences to the family.
Of course, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Ashman. Mr. Schramm?
Make a motion to note, we received reports of officers and management, and incorporate these into the minutes.
I have a motion by Mr. Schramm to note, and a second by Reverend Agnew, to note that we received reports of officers and management, and that these will be incorporated into the minutes. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And that motion carries. Reverend Agnew? Mayor.
One other thing we've discussed with you previously, this Jefferson Street project, it'll go to OPWC on the 5th of November, to see if we can get a $400,000 grant there, which is a million-dollar project, 100% funding, be it loan or grant. So it's guaranteed the money's there. I think it's what, a million and one, somewhere around a million and one to do that project. That's water and sewer lines down Jefferson Street. That's where we're starting to have problems, sewer lines starting to become egg-shaped. So just so you're aware, that is moving forward. We had a meeting last week with the engineers. We're going to put it out to OPWC November the 5th. Hopefully, we can get enough points to get funded it, Marietta, and we get $400,000 up front of the money, it'd be a great thing.
It would be a wonderful thing. Mr. Hunker?
I'll make the motion, will you adjourn?
I have a motion by Mr. Hunker. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Armstrong, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And we will adjourn with a salute to the.
John, that meeting's down in Marietta.
Don't wait until you sign the letter.
Yes, thank you.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible][1794.12]